We are ready to get our meeting underway for the City Council here in Fillmore. And I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask if Councilmember Brogie will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and we'll have our roll call.
Councilmember Brogie.
Here.
Mayor Protem Mendez.
Here.
Mayor Viasenor.
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Gavizca.
Thank you, and actually I want to remind my fellow councilmembers to please make sure you're speaking fully into the mic and when we're talking that it's pressed with the green light showing. Okay, thank you. Okay, and now next is our approval of our agenda.
So moved?
All right, do I have a second? A second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, our agenda is approved. Our next item is our public comments. These are for items not listed on the agenda. Do we have any public comments? I didn't receive any comment cards. No, no public comments. Okay, we'll move on then to item number six, our City Council reports, recommendations, comments, committee, reports, kind of everything that the councilmembers would like to comment on and report back on. All right, I'll hand it off to any councilmembers who'd like to make any announcements. Yes. Councilmember Garnica.
Okay, so if you recall at the last council meeting, I mentioned that the United Water Conservation District was considering a bond measure, and it's still a consideration that potentially could have increased the cost per acre foot from about forty dollars per acre foot to about two hundred, so a very substantial increase. And that bond that they're, again, it's just a contemplation at this point, would be for about two-hundred-and-fifty million dollars for the entire watershed district of the United Water Conservation District. I did get some more details on what that was for, and I had a pretty lengthy conversation with Tony Emmerich, who's the executive, I believe he's the director for the basin, as executive director for the Fillmore-Piru groundwater basin. And what he informed me of was that the main problem that they're facing and the reason why they're looking for this bond, potentially, again, it's not been confirmed yet, is that, if you recall, that the Oroville Dam, when we had pretty severe storms a few years ago, the Oroville Dam was under danger of being undermined because there was so much water that had to go over the emergency overflow, that it was more water than the dam was designed for. And what was happening was that overflow was undermining the dam itself, and there was a danger of that dam collapsing. And so luckily it didn't, it managed to survive, but it put a lot of concern in other dams. And of course, for those of us here in this basin, the Piru Dam or the San Felicia Dam, Feliciano I think it is, that dam has a very similar spillway designed in a very similar manner. And because of that, it raised alarm bells about that dam, that if we had a similar event as to what happened up north, that there would be the potential for that dam to collapse. Obviously, that would not be something we want, we want to wait to see what happens. So the United Water Conservation District is examining different ways to solve that problem because the spillway, again, is, they believe, slightly undersized for what potentially could happen under a severe weather event. So that's the main thrust of that potential bond. Now, again, it's not been approved, that, you know, United Water has not decided to go forward with that yet. If they did, they would anticipate it would take a little while for it to, you know, a lot of discussion, obviously, and a lot of input from the community, but that would be the main, probably more than fifty percent of those funds would go towards that, I guess, I don't want to call it repair, but an upgrade to the spillway of the dam. So that was a conversation I had with Tony Emmerich. He did say that he would be willing to come and address the council, and I also, I gave him Erica's information so that we could arrange for that because I think it's really important that the city and our residents know what's going on and what the potential is here. So that's my report for that. Also, I wanted to report, I did go to Rio Vista today. My wife was acknowledged as the Administrator of the Year because, and also she's retiring this year, so both things. So I did go to that. Chrissy Shefflerly and her staff was there, and I was representing myself, but I guess also the city. And that's it for me.
Thank you, John. Any other updates? Yes, Carrie.
Yeah, I have three things to report out on. I did attend a Ventura County Transportation Commission meeting on Friday in Camarillo, and the hot-button issue, the topic that everyone from Fillmore is always interested in is what's happening with the Santa Paula branch line and Sierra Northern train. And at this point, the completion date for the repair of the bridge for the train is still October of this year, and so far that hasn't changed. I mean, they've pushed it back a couple times, but it's holding fast for October. So hopefully we'll see more train activity in Fillmore after that point in time. The one unknown factor is, I think probably most of the community knows this by now, but the Sierra Northern does not operate all the fun trains, the touristy-type trains. They're interested in freight more than anything, so their sister company, Mendocino, is responsible for any of the tourist trains and things of that sort that will eventually come through Santa Paula and to Fillmore. I don't have a time on that, but that's what we're looking forward to. And as soon as I, I've asked them, Mendocino, to come down from Sacramento to report on that at the next VCTC meeting, so hopefully we'll hear from them, and I'll have an update for you on that. And then the other item I wanted to make our community aware of is that on the twenty-first of May, the Ventura County Peace Officers Association is holding the officers, Peace Officers Memorial Ceremony, which they do annually on Wednesday, May twenty-first, at ten a.m. And this is, I've been several times, especially when I worked at the government center, I was able to just walk up to the office and attend every year. It's just a really heartfelt memorial for all fallen officers in the county of Ventura from all agencies, and they ring a bell for all that have passed. It's just a real heartfelt and a time to reflect on what law enforcement has done for our county here. So I just encourage anyone who's able to attend, it's held at the memorial area for peace officers, which is on the victorious side of the government center. And again, that's on May twenty-first at ten a.m. So I'd love to see council out there and any representatives from Fillmore. And then lastly, my ongoing porch talks have been a success, so we're ongoing. I posted information about my porch talks, which is just an opportunity for constituents to come and talk about anything you want to talk about with regard to Fillmore. We've had several successful meetings over the last few months, and I posted, the next one is actually tomorrow evening, and again, at my house, on my front porch, and that starts at six o'clock. It's open house from six o'clock to eight o'clock, lots of goodies, stuff to drink. So if you are inclined to want to come and chat and talk about Fillmore, you have questions, you have comments, ideas on how we can improve our community, come join us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. Yes, so I had the opportunity of attending the SCAG Conference, the Southern California Association of Governments, and that was May first and second in Palm Desert. It was the sixtieth annual conference, so it was pretty special, and we also elected Councilmember Jenny Crosswhite from the city of Santa Paula as our second vice president. That's all, that's all I have to report.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Luis.
I had a meeting with a local restaurant owner, and one of the concerns that was brought up was the street vendor situation. I did talk to him about the recent report that Kevin gave us that was very thorough and it touched base on all these different aspects of the situation that we're dealing with where it comes to private property, local property, county property, Caltrans. It's a very complicated issue. I tried my best to communicate that situation, even though it was already present at a previous council meeting. The individual did share concern about how rigorous the city might be or the type of municipal abilities that the city has regardless of what the state allows. It did kind of remind me of the conversation that we had, as well as the comments that were made by our, by fellow councilmembers, where a councilmember mentioned maybe a little bit of a tougher approach. I'm not really sure what that means, and it's not something that I am proposing or directing, it is just what was, what was discussed and reported to me and wanted to be, something that wanted to be mentioned to the, to the community. But thank you, guys.
All right, thank you. Thank you for sharing. Yes, I also have a couple of updates on work and activities in the last month. Want to say probably about three weeks ago, I attended the Ventura County Taxpayers Association, I think it's their monthly breakfast, they're usually held in Camarillo, but there was one held at Flight One Twenty-Six Cafe in Santa Paula, so it made it a little easier, and attended actually a presentation by the Agricultural Commissioner for the county, Corinne Bell. And really informative, just, it was, it was very good to go and to meet others who are part of the association and hear about sort of what are the trends that are happening in agriculture. So I don't want to spend time rattling off a lot of what she said, but I think it'd be great in the future to actually have the ag commissioner come and speak about, you know, the state of ag here in the county and the future of ag. So I just wanted to mention that. For the Ventura Regional Sanitation District, we've been having a, I'm going to say probably about, for three months now, a ongoing recruitment for a new general manager who's going to be retiring, as well as a head of operations, and that is for the whole district, including toll and landfill and in charge of the other wastewater services that the Regional Sanitation District operates. So there, we're going to be having candidates soon, and so I will keep the council and the city informed of how that moves forward. But I do want to mention that, and I think this is a trend that is across the county and probably across municipalities everywhere and different public jurisdictions, is that there's a real, can you say vacancy in terms of younger folks who are taking on these technical jobs in wastewater and solid waste management and also just other, other technical jobs. And so that's been an ongoing conversation we've been having at the district, and I'll give you some more information when I get it, but I think that there's, there's movement across jurisdictions to maybe work together in the county to see how can, you know, we help work maybe even with L.A. County to really advocate for, for training, you know, institutes and other things that draw in the younger generation for these, for these kind of jobs that are, again, very well-paying, technical certified jobs, and they're needed. You know, this is, this is infrastructure, this is infrastructure for our communities. So I'll keep you posted as I hear more on that, but there's, there's discussions that are going on, you know, across Ventura County, and I'm sure, I'm sure, everywhere. I wanted to mention, and I wanted to thank also fellow councilmembers and our city manager who took part in the Take Five and Read Initiative from First Five Ventura County. I know that our mayor, Protem Albert Mendez, oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were. Okay.
No, as a matter of fact, remember the audience, Jackie Maglan, she took place.
Oh, wonderful. Thank you, Jackie, for that, and thank you, Erica, for going and also for Manny. It's a great thing that we're able to do every year, and, you know, elected, appointed officials and then also other, other leadership in cities, reading to kindergarten, pre-K, and myself at the Fillmore Library during storytime. And so it was just really great, and again, it's about making sure that we get the word out about the importance of reading, reading, reading every day, every night to our littles, especially, of course, ages zero to five. So just wanted to mention that. And also that when I was at the library, I spoke to our librarian, Ms. Yvonne, and she said there is a need in here in Fillmore for adult tutors for ESL, for English as a Second Language. We do have our adult school that has classes in the evenings, but again, not everyone can make those evenings, it doesn't, you know, fit with schedules, and some folks work better one-on-one in that kind of situation. So she is looking for English as a Second Language or ESL tutors, so you can pop on over to the library and they'll have more information about how you can get involved. Sorry, I'll try to, couple more. Let's see, I did a radio interview last week for All Things Eight-O-Five. That's a community program that airs on Sunday mornings on Q-1047, and I was able to plug our Fifth Annual Health and Wellness Resource Fair that is coming up this Saturday, May seventeenth. And also, we're working alongside and collaborating with Rotary and the Fillmore High School cross-country team for their five-K, ten-K, and one-K Kids Fun Run. So it's going to be an amazing day of health, outdoor activity, you know, wellness, and lots of resources. There's going to be over fifty, yeah, five-zero, over fifty community booths that'll be set up in front of the Fillmore Unified School District front lawn there on Sespe Avenue near the corner of Sespe and A Street. So just wanted to plug that. And, yes, yes, please.
Just to add to the five-K, ten-K run, it's a five-K, if you could only run five-K, that's fine, even for kids who won't run five, there's a fun run for them that'll be set up. There's prizes, there's raffle tickets, there's baskets, giveaways. It's going to be just a really, really fun event, and every year it's a huge success for the community and for Rotary specifically, and that money goes right back out in the community again, so I hope you can all attend.
Thank you, Carrie. Yep, I think it's amazing. I heard that there's already like over a hundred, I mean, like maybe even two hundred, a few different teams of, big teams of runners who are running.
Yeah, this is the largest that we've had so far of people that have signed up in advance, and then you can sign up on the day of. And I know that the city of Fillmore put a team together. How many people are on that team? All right, I want a number.
I raise my hand a little bit.
Nineteen?
So far.
Nineteen city staff members participating as a team, right?
Love it.
Family and friends.
Family, okay, family and friends.
Majority of them are.
Yeah, just out of curiosity, how do you do that as a team? You're not doing a Don Pass, but.
Just, they're a mob, they're just going to stay together.
Anyways, I hope that the community will turn out for that. Thank you.
That's great. And I also plugged on the radio show that you do not have to be a runner, this is a, it is a run slash walk, so if you would just like to get out, enjoy the fresh air, and do the walk, that would be really great. Okay. En español quiere decir que este fin de semana, en sábado, es el Cinco Anual Feria de Salud y Bienestar y también carrera aquí en Fillmore. Para más información, por favor, visite Facebook y también Instagram de la ciudad de Fillmore, y esperamos que usted y sus familias puede venir a esta feria. Vamos a tener más de cincuenta organizaciones vienen con puestos con mucha información para todo, para la salud, para toda la familia. Gracias. Okay, I think I'll, I think that's it for right now. I'll move on and I'll maybe save these next for our next main meeting. Okay, thank you, everybody. That was a great sharing of information, and as you can see, we are all really busy representing the city and just doing really great work, so thank you, fellow councilmembers. Okay, great, we'll move on now to item number seven, Consent Calendar. I do want to make a note that on item seven B, the city's fire hazard severity zone map, the incorrect map was attached in the original agenda, however, the correct map has been attached, has been distributed to the councilmembers and will be circulated prior to the adoption of this ordinance. So just wanted to make that for the record, that is an amended seven B.
And it's also available on the website.
Yes, also available on the website, thank you. Okay, with that amendment, do I, looking for a motion on the consent calendar?
I'll move as amended.
I have a motion, I have a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. We've passed our consent calendar, and now we are on to our first item of new business, the public hearing pursuant to AB twenty-five-sixty-one for the vacancy in the building inspection slash code enforcement officer position. Okay, good evening, Jackie.
Good evening, mayor and councilmembers and members of the public. In compliance with the Assembly Two-Five-Six-One, which went to effect January first, twenty-twenty-five, requires public agencies to hold a public hearing once per the fiscal year to report any full-time positions that remain vacant for ninety days or more. We currently have about forty full-time positions with one vacancy exceeding the ninety days, and that's the building inspector code enforcement officer position. This has been open since September twelfth, twenty-twenty-four, which exceeded that ninety days. I would just like to note, this role has proven to be difficult to fill due to its hybrid nature that requires expertise for building inspecting and code enforcement. And despite our ongoing efforts, it has not been filled, we have not received qualified applicants to meet the minimum requirements at the moment. As for our efforts, you know, we advertise on our city of Fillmore website, social media, professional associations, and specialized job boards. Currently, as a next step, since it's been vacant for so long, we're obviously continuing to target recruitment, trying to figure out where else we could, you know, find people that meet these requirements, but also we've engaged to try to get qualified consultants or contract staff to provide temporary support for these responsibilities. A RFP has already been completed and it's currently being reviewed. If we do go through the consulting, go through the consulting agreement, we will bring a separate agreement to the city council if we move forward with that. But as of right now, this kind of concludes the hearing for that AB Two-Five-Six-One regarding the current vacancies exceeding the ninety days. Yes?
So I have a question. So I understand that you're having a hard time filling the position because of the hybrid nature. Has the city considered maybe splitting the job into two, two positions as opposed to one that's a hybrid? You know, if you haven't, that's fine, I'm just curious if you have or not.
Go ahead.
I can probably answer that question. The workload itself wouldn't justify a one full-time employee, and so that's why it's a merge of the two positions. It is, like Jackie mentioned, it's not uncommon, a lot of other neighboring jurisdictions, not only in Ventura County, but L.A. County, San Bernardino County are having difficulty filling the roles, and so that is why we went through the RFP process. Like Jackie mentioned, it is being reviewed currently, and we will plan to bring something back to city council for consideration, but we will continue with our efforts for recruitment.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. If you have any other questions.
Thank you so much for your question.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Okay, so.
Mayor, just to briefly clarify, there's no public comment on this item?
Okay.
Is there any?
Right, oh, yeah, let me ask that question, just, I didn't receive any public comment on this agenda item, just to, no, there's no public comment.
Thank you, mayor.
Okay, you're welcome, thank you. All right. Okay, so no action needs to be taken formally then on this item. Okay, we'll move on then to agenda item number eight B, the adoption of Resolution Number Twenty-Five-Dash-Four-Zero-Seven-One, approving the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six annual budget for the city of Fillmore.
Mayor, real quick, before we move on.
Yes.
The recommendation was that we have a, hold a public hearing. Isn't that supposed to be gavelled in and gavelled out in order to make it official?
That's a good, that's a good question.
This is sort of an interesting technical question. This is a law, it's brand-new this year. The way that we've interpreted it this first year is not that it requires a formal, you know, public hearing with newspaper notice, that type of thing, but more of a presentation to the city council, an opportunity for members of the community to speak if they wanted to. So at this point, I read the law to not require a public, a formal public hearing like you would for a land use type of item or a permit type of thing. That's a good technical question. It's something that's not entirely clear in the law, and it'll sort of be interesting to see how that develops in coming years, but it, just again, to reiterate, it's not a formal public hearing, at least that's the interpretation at this time that I have. Thank you for that question.
Yeah, thanks for the clarification.
Okay, yeah, thank you, thank you for the question. Yes, very good. Okay, great. Okay, so I'll re-read for eight B. This is now, we're on adoption of the Resolution Number Twenty-Five-Dash-Four-Zero-Seven-One, approving the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five annual budget for the city of Fillmore. And I'll bring Ms. Deborah Cavallaro. Thank you.
Good evening, councilmembers and Viasenor. My name's Deborah Cavallaro, Finance Director, and tonight we are here to ask city council to review and modify as appropriate the FY twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six budget and approve Resolution Number Twenty-Five-Dash-Four-Zero-Seven-One.
Deborah, could you speak into the microphone?
Adopting the, it's, better? Adopting, okay, adopting the FY twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six, a preliminary budget. Okay, so here we go. So the budget process, there's an overview that we provided to allow consumers, actually consumers, the citizens to know how this process is being done. So the city council approves the budget development guidelines, finance department projects available fund balances, we verify operational daily requirements such as review funding sources, continued services, as well as ensure that we are meeting our forty percent general fund reserve, that is currently our policy. We also look out to what we call two, one, three, five years along with the general plan for potential projects. This year, we actually, my ad staff asked for, we call it a wish list. So what is the wish list? The wish list is say, what do we need in order for us to either continue operations, to meet new current requirements, new requirements, and therefore be able to plan out a little more efficiently? And we also pick up with the priority on projects as well as maybe possible new services that are coming down the pipe. Review the new and potential legislative requirements, as well as we meet with department heads to review the requests. We also then meet with the ad hoc, ad hoc budget team, which is the mayor and councilmember Brogie are on this time, as well as it is our accounting supervisor, Amberita Bay, city manager, Eric Herrera, and Manny, our assistant city manager. At the end of this, we present the budget of doing today, and then the year-end, we then come back, which will be in June, to see if there's any fund balance that we need to maybe have to be allocated for any costs associated with unexpected costs at the year end. And this, of course, is a reminder, is a living document. If we, if it's budgeted tonight, it does not mean that some of these projects are set in stone. Things could happen such as, as we had in twenty-twenty-three, the Sore disaster, as well as projects that come in maybe for bid, could be higher cost, or they may. as well as projects that come in maybe for bid. Could be higher cost, or they may have not the, uh, equipment or supplies needed to complete this project this year. So, looking back for twenty-four, twenty-five, what are our city's accomplishments? We installed the shade structures at Dolores Day and Two Rivers Parks. We completed the street resurfacing and pavement preservation projects. Awarded and distributed downtown rehabilitation grants through ARPA funding. We had seventeen graduates, graduates, excuse me, from the Fire Academy for Reserve Firefighters. We installed public safety cameras and conducted DUI saturation patrols via OTS grants. And we awarded the one-point-four-nine million encampment resolution funding grant to combat homelessness. So, what are our objectives? Some of our objectives include launching a city newsletter to regularly inform the community about key initiatives, updates, and events. Advance the economic development by implementing the strategies outlined in the current, city's current economic development plan. Complete the Doris, uh, Dolores Day Park modular restroom project. Install upgraded irrigation controllers and repair key water lines. And implement the encampment resolution funding grant. So, this year, the general fund, we are projecting for preliminary budget of eleven million, six-hundred-eight thousand, seven-hundred-and-eighty-six dollars. Of that, seventy-two-point-seven percent of that is related to taxes. As you can see on the slide, we have property tax that we are saying there'll be one-point-three million. Uh, residual tax from the successor agency, about eight-hundred-thousand. Our vehicle licensing fee, property tax in lieu of, to almost two-point-five million. Our sales and use tax of almost approximately, uh, three-point-five. Also, of course, our tran, was it, transit lodging tax and our business license fee. So, questions come up regarding our property, our general fund and property tax revenues. So, how does this come about? So, as you see here, these, uh, these presentations are actually from the Ventura County Tax Collector's website. And so, where the property tax goes, for that dollar, as you can see, eight percent of that comes to the city. Whereas you see twenty percent there, schools and special districts. Then what about sales tax? Where does the sales tax go? Yeah, we are currently at a seven-point-two-five percent sales tax. Sixty percent of that goes to the state. Of that, a half percentage is part of that prop, uh, prop, uh, one-seventy-two for public safety, which we do receive funding for that as well. Then, as you see there, we receive one percent of that sales tax. And then there's a transportation program, point-two-five. That is from VCTC's. Gives us the allocation of what called the TDA funding that you see before, uh, we see every fall that we present to you. Now, keep in mind that, remember that this is for, uh, sales tax within the city. If you order online, that goes actually to, it's not, and if you don't pick it up, or it's not a point of sale within the city, that goes into the county pool. And then it gets distributed by the city, by the ten city, between the ten cities and the uncorporated areas. Whoever has the highest sales tax will get the most of that portion. So, this be advised. Next is our appropriation. This year, with our appropriations, we are requesting a not balanced budget. But this is because we're doing some initiatives of delay, that we had some deferred maintenance and getting ready for requirements that we needed to fill. As you see, our public safety is almost fifty percent of our general fund expense. And as well as our city administration's about fifteen percent. But that also includes nine departments, such as the city manager's office, human resources, information test technology, and risk management. So, some highlights of our general fund expenses. We have a hundred-and-fifty-thousand earmarked to be allocated to homeless initiatives. Right now, that isn't being negotiated. We do not know the final cost at that time, but we have, uh, earmarked at the most to a hundred-and-fifty-thousand. If there is less that is negotiated when it's completed, that money just rolls back in the general fund. So, if any projects do not occur and we do not have it, um, then earmarked or sent by council anywhere else, that just rolls back into the general fund to be used for the following year. We had a four percent increase. That's going to happen for, um, salary increases per the MOAs. A hundred-and-eighty-five thousand for our new human resource supervisor. This position was completed as we had to, you know, to have segregation of duties. The increase of now two MOAs and regulatory requirements that help us.
Sorry, does your minus on the, on the abbreviation acronym for MOA?
Oh, sorry, it's memorandum of agreement.
Okay, thank you.
Very understanding, excuse me. There's MOUs and MOAs. I'm, I use both the others. I'm sorry.
MOU.
I meant, yeah, I'm using the two agreements. I apologize.
That's fine. No, no problem. Thank you.
Thank you. And then we have the two-hundred-and-sixty-two thousand to two, two new firefighters. Now, this is also actually, has always been in a budget, but it's under in our overtime category. So, therefore, we have lessened the overtime that will be, um, required for, uh, firefighters going to the salaries. We do still have a little bit of overtime to, um, be able to cover the cost because, of course, if anyone is on vacation, on leave, you'll need to have someone step in. And this also brings up the fire department to have a full staff on their, um, vehicles as well. Uh, we have ten thousand for the downtown wave finding sign. So, we're hopefully, that'll be a great sign. Seventy-five thousand is the beginning of the new general plan. And as you know, general plans take a, a lot of effort, but this is for seventy-five thousand to, to begin looking at the process. We have a hundred-and-twenty thousand that we have earmarked for code enforcement contractor. And I'm glad, uh, council member Rodriguez had mentioned that process. It is for to be able to update our procedures as well as address our street vendors and our illegal business backlog. We also have seventy thousand miscellaneous repairs, such as the lighting, as you see in the promenade and city hall. Two-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand for the fire, uh, various protective equipment and EMS supplies. EMS supplies such as the type of drugs that they needed when they are on call, um, have risen dramatically. As well as different regulations for the equipment that firefighters have to wear, such as what they call their turnouts, that every fifteen years replaced. Now, it's every ten. And in addition, now they're requiring to have an additional set. Of course, as you know, with the recent fires, they go out, they go and rest, and when they come back, they go back out again, they have to put on, you know, a contaminated, uh, uniform. So, therefore, or protective gear, therefore, they will have an extra with them as well. Uh, we receive from the county, the new county rates of three-point-four percent increase in sheriff contract rates. And then I noted here as one of the, um, goals is a six-hundred-and-fifty-nine thousand this year is for park operation and maintenance, uh, which we established, we actually increased a staff member that's now to be fully cycled in this year's budget. And also allocate staff, two, more staff to the park operations so they can make necessary repairs because we are seeing increased vandalism, including graffiti removal to part, to the park property. And we are, look like we're average, are going to have five-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand in park maintenance and utility costs. So, next, we're going to look at the, um, other, oh, did my slide jump up here? Oh, there you are. Good, thank you. Oh, my goodness. Okay, so, general fund transfers out. So, this is where we have items that, there's certain funds that we, that do not have either enough funds, enough funding sources, uh, funding for their expenses, their other funding sources aren't covering it. Or, for example, for anything that's related to parks, anything related even to streets with the funding that we have, recreation, pool, that has to be supplemented by the general fund. So, as you see here, we have six-hundred-and-forty thousand in construction in progress that we are allocating out from the general fund. We're having two-hundred-and-thirty-nine thousand of gas tax fund. There is a hundred thousand in that CIP that's going, uh, that will also be going to the gas tax fund to cover a couple items. Uh, we're going to be transferring out four-hundred-and-seventy-eight thousand through the, uh, recreation fund, two-hundred-and-nineteen thousand community pool, and then sixty-nine thousand to other funds. So, I wanted to, um, highlight those funds that have a large contribution from the general fund. In this case, the gas tax fund. The gas tax this year, we're, um, projecting it to be flat, which is about four-hundred-and-ninety thousand dollars that we receive. And of which, this year, we're looking at, uh, twenty-five thousand for the propane trailer and the hot asphalt hauler to help with potholes. A, the A Street guardrail repair, also street and sidewalk repair contracts. Um, we also have a hundred-and-three-two thousand for street lights. This is our electric, electricity that bills that we pay every month. And now, we're going to increase it by eighty thousand dollars to two-hundred thousand for street, uh, tree maintenance in this fund. In addition, for, uh, Recreation Fund, we have expenses of seven-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand. This year is going to be the first year that we have our full, have our full cycle senior nutrition program. In the past, the county would pay for the food and then give us a grant towards our expenditures. This year, we are, we received, um, they don't have the funding that they used to, to cover all the food. So, we're receiving a hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars for the grant. And that will, and that will cover both, basically, our food, which we're rejecting about a hundred-and-thirty-five thousand in food costs. And then the remaining costs will have to be covered by general fund. We also have two-hundred-and-forty thousand expenditures relating to the active adult center and community centers. This is where community centers, Boys and Girls Club, the active adult center that they may have, they have the, uh, different programs and Zuma classes and that nature there. In addition, we have three-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand, um, pool expenditures. We have eighty-seven thousand, um, covered by parcel tax and another fifty-six thousand from, um, this Unified School District does their rental. Next, we have additional special revenue. This is, uh, our public trans, public transit, and this comes from TDA money. Um, that's the money that we talked about from VCTC that comes every year that, um, hopefully, we're not sure if it'll be this high this year because last year was more, was higher because they were adding, um, new vehicles. But also too, that we do have this year is going to be the, um, the, one from Fillmore Moore Park. So, I haven't seen what the cost would be for the, the route on that. Um, this is the last year for the American Rescue Plan for ARPA. We have a hundred-and-forty-two thousand to complete the rest of those projects. And after that, it gets submitted to the treasury. Now, again, if any funding that we're going through, once our projects close or leftover, as we had done in December of twenty-twenty-four, if there was, um, obligated funds that do qualify under the different type of projects, such as in parks and that nature, we can, for example, having many leftover, we can use that towards the park. Now, we haven't done our final, um, calculation on interest, but any interest that is earned on that, that's all right. That interest stays with the, with the city. Uh, we also have one-point-two million that we're saying TDA Article HC and SB one transfers are going to go for the street CIPs. Fifty thousand that was, um, approved for the housing trust fund for Ventura County. And for that, one-point-four-nine million grant that we receive for homelessness, we have five-hundred-and-ninety-nine thousand, three-hundred-and-fifty-six dollars that we are looking at to spend for this fiscal year. Moving on to the enterprise funds, this is including depreciation. We have eight million, a hundred-and-twenty-two thousand of expenses that would be for the year. Um, we looked, again, uh, reaching out to FEMA. We're still in the pipeline. We're on final review for the emergency portion. And we're on still environmental and historical preservation review for FEMA. I am seeing they did, uh, from last week on the ninth, there was some activity, looking at the portal. There's a portal I can look at and see where they are in the process. But, again, we are unaware of when it will occur. Then we have a hundred-and-eighty thousand that we have a replacement fund that we're going to use for, for CIP projects. The water operating fund, we're having six million, almost six-point-one million dollars to be expended this year. This is going towards a water utility truck, the dump trailer. And then seven-hundred thousand is going towards the CIP project. And this year will also be the launch of the Aqua Hawk, um, system that you've know about, that Lorena had previously did a presentation on. That is going to be, um, we have it for July first. It'll go live. So, next, we're looking at, as I say, money and transfers. Here is our CIP appropriations in, uh, budget. It'll be seven-point-one million dollars we're looking at. And there's, as you see, there's various projects we have throughout. And we also made sure to list the funding source so that we know where this money is coming from. With those that say general, that is the general fund. DIF, of course, is the development impact fees. And then TDA, armory and grant, and then SOR and water and storm drain. That shows the various projects we have. We have the well-tanned development. That's two-point-two million dollars. We have, if you combo, we have a one-point-six, um, probably almost one-point-five million-dollar, um, main line and storm drain that was going to replace, that's going to look like to be replaced. And then we also have the pub, uh, police restroom remodel, exhaust fans and equipment for the aquatic center. That's going to be a hundred-and-sixty-three thousand dollars. New roof, um, Shields Park upgrade, various master plans upgrade, uh, updates that we are required by law to do so. Reservoir plant painting and, uh, landscape and irrigation, um, items. Next, we have, what is our active debt service? So, this is the balance that we are projecting for the end of June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six, after the, these balances are paid throughout the year. So, as you can see, we have, um, one, and due by order of maturity. So, we have, the first one's going to mature in twenty-thirty and the last one will be mature in twenty-forty-seven. This does not include developer, sorry, it does not include the co, uh, community facility districts. Those are actually ones we just basically manage. Um, and those have various debts that come throughout. The last we have here is the successor agency obligation. This was actually brought to you in December of, uh, twenty-twenty-four. Before then, we had, we needed to go to the Ventura County Oversight Board to get approval. Uh, there's various meetings on that. And then we, once that's sent, then it gets sent for final review and approval for the finance department. And what they do is that Department of Finance looks and says what you had in your previous year, twenty-twenty-three. If you had any funds left over that weren't expensed, you send them the budget and they said, okay, I'm asking for three-point-seven-nine-nine million. Okay, you had some extra money left over. We deduct that and we'll pay you the seven, three million, seven-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand. This is for enforceable obligations. The biggest is our debt service. And the debt service is June for the thirtieth, sorry, June first, twenty-thirty-one will be the, the final maturity of that debt. And as you can see right now, at the end of the year, we're projecting it six million, three-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars. And also too, we're not also including this presentation to include the interest payments. This is strictly looking at debt itself. So, the goals and budget support. This FY twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six budget presentation for approval meets all of FY twenty-twenty-four, twenty-six city council goals that were produced in, even March of this year. That's revitalize the downtown Central Avenue, it's enhance parks and recreation, upgrade public infrastructure, address homelessness, and improve public communication and engagement. And while we are using more fun, uh, more, uh, fund balance for general fund, we're still meeting the forty percent reserve policy that has been set by the council. Again, a special thanks to the budget team, as myself, Amber Tabe, your accounting supervisor, as our project manager. She went through and sent out all the items, all the, uh, worksheets, worked with each of the departments, sat down and said, identify again. Here's the wish list. Tell me what to need, why. Um, and then we also have Amira Rosas, who did the, uh, a final view for us. But also, as we're working on the budget process, day-to-day activities don't stop. So, Myra's there to help back us up when we were working on this budget. Also, like to thank the executive teams here that are hard here today, who are also stakeholders that are here to answer any questions. The Budget Ad Hoc Timid Committee Team, thank you very much for being there and your support, looking over and asking different questions to, to mold this budget. Also, again, all city departments, it's not just the directors, the city departments, when we needed support, they came in and provided what we needed. And of course, your city council, thank you for your directions at this time. So, that is the end of the presentation. I'm here to answer questions. And again, also, if you have any more details, please, we have our staff here to answer.
Thank you so much, Deborah. That was just a really excellent presentation. I'll check and see if anyone has any questions for Deborah.
Yes.
Uh, going back to the presentation, I believe it was the highlights of projects that have been completed?
Yes. Oh, there we go.
Bullet point number two. Can you touch on that and, and what, what's included in? I want to know what, what was completed?
Actually, I believe that's the twenty-three, which I have Roxanne or Joe, would you like to, uh, uh, answer the question regarding the completed street servicing projects that we had for twenty-twenty-five?
The completed ones?
Yes, or in process to being completed as well. Great.
This is for last year though.
This twice twenty-four.
So, twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five fiscal year. Just want to clarify- So 2024, 2025 fiscal year, just want to clarify that, not the ones you have ongoing right now, but the ones from the previous, yes.
The previous fiscal year? My brain is all about the paving that we're doing right now.
So the current.
What did we do last year?
Yeah, the current, not the upcoming one. So what, what has been completed?
The one that's under construction, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, then we're St. Pete's, thank you. You just wanted an update on where we are?
Yes.
Okay. And we, we are going to be performing digouts this week on Thursday and Friday. So we'll be addressing a lot of the tree roots on Clay Street and Good Enough Road and other patchwork around town Thursday, Friday. And then on Monday, we're going to start milling and paving and putting down chip seal. So all next week, they'll be paving going on, you know, a lot of different processes. Milling's going to be followed by chip seal, going to be followed by paving. And so all of the other streets that we're going to be paved are going to be done Monday through Friday next week. And then they'll be coming back towards the end of May with the final slurry seal, which will finish the cape seal. So when we put down the hot-coated chips on the streets and it'll be a rough ride with chip seal next week. That will be driven on for a while and then we'll come back and put a slurry seal, which will be the final surface, which will smooth it out a lot. So I would like everybody to know that when we put the chip seal down, that's not it, we're not done. We're coming back again. We're working with the contractor to schedule that slurry seal on Good Enough Road on, on a Saturday. So it doesn't impact the trucking at Ameron and the trucking at Williams Homes Grading will tell them to stop on that Saturday. So probably Saturday, the thirty-first. And the neighborhood streets will be done like that Thursday, Friday, May twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth and thirtieth, or something along those lines. So that's the status. We will be paving right out here, Santa Clara Avenue is one of the streets that we're paving, or Santa Clara Street. And on the cul-de-sacs down below on the one twenty-six. So it's all going to be happening in the next couple of weeks and wrapping up at the end of the month. Okay?
Roxanne, question, so I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think there was also a lot of, the sidewalk was previously done last month, was that correct?
Yeah, we're done with the concrete work.
Right.
And so we've replaced ribbon gutters and lifted sidewalks, curb and gutter kind of all over town. So this year's concrete work is complete and done. So we're getting close. Any other questions?
Yeah, I know I'm going to be asked this question. I was asked it probably three times this week. Village Circle?
Yeah, Village Square Road.
Village Square, yeah. What is the status of that?
They'll be grinding and paving it next week.
Next week, okay.
Yep, and that one will get the grinding, then the chip seal, then the paving. And so by next Friday, it'll be a lovely new road, just before Memorial Day weekend.
We're going to have a street party.
Yes, 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 next week.
And just for the record, the exact locations were brought up to council on January fourteenth. So there's a staff report there. If you go to the archive, you can pull the exact locations that Roxanne's referring to.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Deborah, I do have a question, maybe a clarification. It was on the slide that talked about FEMA. You had mentioned there's emergency and then there's sort of, I think you used the word historical. Maybe this is regarding the FEMA reimbursement. And I guess my question is, you said emergencies moving forward a little quicker than maybe the other pot. I was wondering amount-wise, sort of what's the proportion?
Okay, so for the first one is again, the emergency street, that is the one that we were to keep the operations flowing. And that is in what they call the final FEMA stage. If we break that stage, that is when they will give us the called the obligation. And that is looking at roughly, if I recall, is that the eight, about eight million dollar, one that we submitted, but it's probably going to be six to seven, at least for FEMA side. Because what happens is, once that gets obligated, they send it to the state, the state does a review of the project as well. And then the state portion will then kick in.
Okay, great. So, so this particular one, the emergency one, is the larger, bigger, sorry, bigger chunk of the two.
Yes, and this is the one we would like to receive first. The second one is in when it's in environmental, historical, that is the second, that is the second to the top stage. After it breaks into there, then they do the final stage and again, and that is for the, the replacement of the manhole. And then also too, there's about sixty thousand dollars that, once all that is completed, we should receive well. And that sixty thousand dollars goes towards to do a sealing to help sure that it doesn't have water seeping going forward. I don't know the, the very details of it, but that is what it's for.
Okay, thank you. Yes, John?
Question. So this, this question has to do more with budget development and our process for that. So kind of on two, two opposite ends of the spectrum of the budget development. So the first one is more on the short term. I noticed in the budget development process, and again, this is my first time going through this, so please forgive me if this sounds kind of ignorant. But is there a, do we have a budget development check-in at about the six-month mark or somewhere around there? So that the, the City Council can get updated as to where we are with regard to the budget and our actual expenditures? Is that done at all?
Yes, that'll be our mid-year when we come back and we ask for, if they say update, to say here's where we are. Or if we need additional appropriations, for example, if a sewer came up, a project there, we would ask for appropriations for the, from the certain or funding source, if there's funding, is available. And also, or say if there is an issue coming that we would come up and ask guidance on as to how to spend it.
Okay, that's a, thank you.
Right, ask these questions because also to this is, as I said, living document, our budget process is also to a living document. And we want to make sure for next year, we come up and ask for the calendar to be approved, that we ensure that we are not, there's always room for growth and/or processes that change throughout time.
Thank you. Thank you. Carrie, yes?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a question, Deborah, but I, I just have to say, and letting the, our community know this, that the detail that goes into this budget just astonishes me. This is the first time that I've been on the ad hoc budget committee. And it's mind-boggling to me how Deborah and her staff keep this straight. And I'm just so impressed that even now, looking at the presentation, after having sat down with you as part of the ad hoc, I understand it. I mean, these are numbers that even I understand, and numbers are not my thing. But I truly appreciate the work that you and your staff put into this. And I mean, I just love the way it looks compared to where we were, you know, just even a few short years ago. Thank you so much for all of your hard work.
I go that.
Thank you. Yes, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely, Deborah. Thank you. And, and I'll have to say, like, like Carrie mentioned, I've been on the budget ad hoc because I also, not, numbers isn't my thing, but I really kind of threw myself in there to say, let me learn. And from my first budget ad hoc meeting a few years ago to where we are now and also the presentation. To be able to give something to the community where someone can see in a few pages, what's going on in film or how are we spending our money? What's coming in, what's going out? It's, it is really clear. And that takes a lot of work to make it that clear and presentable to everyone. So, thank you.
And Deborah, can, is it possible, I mean, I know it's going to be available on, I'm assuming on our website. But can I get a copy of this electronically?
We can, we can send it to you. It wasn't on the website, but it was as a presentation, so, but we can also distribute to everyone because it is public.
That would be great.
That would be great. Okay, are there any further questions for Deborah? Okay, seeing none, then I will look for a, a motion on this item.
I will make a motion to, what am I doing here?
We're on sixty-eight.
No review or no modification, so approve resolution number twenty-five dash four zero seven one, adopting the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six annual budget.
I'll second.
All right.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay, motion carries, our budget is passed, thank you. All right, we'll move on to our next item, eight C, which is the First Amendment to Support Services Agreement with Planet Bids.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Staff is recommending that City Council approve the First Amendment to Support Services Agreement with Planet Bids. This will extend the agreement through July thirteenth, 2027, which is an additional two years to the original three-year agreement. Planet Bids is an electronic procurement and bid management services platform using a proprietary Planet Bid system. It supports vendor and bid management, insurance certification management and contract management. The system benefits are increased transparency and efficiency, enhanced compliance and streamlined procurement. Planet Bids has provided a reliable and responsive service. And the system is actively used across multiple departments, including administration and engineering and public works. The fiscal impact for the two-year agreement would be for year four, which would be the first year of their amendment, would be sixteen thousand, three hundred and thirty-six dollars and twenty-seven cents. And year five would be sixteen thousand, eight hundred and twenty-six dollars and thirty-six cents. The costs reflect a three percent annual increase, annual increase as originally agreed in the original agreement. And this is funded under Contract Services in the Admin Department. So that's it for my presentation, just asking for an amendment to renew the, the agreement for another two years.
Okay, thank you, Shannon, for your presentation. Do we have any questions?
No, thank you for your presentation.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, but we do have to make a motion on this, am I correct, Michael?
I have a motion.
Okay.
I, I move that we approve the First Amendment to Support Services Agreement between Fillmore, City of Fillmore and Planet Bids, Inc., extending the agreement term through July thirteenth, 2027.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Right, moving on to our next agenda item. Okay, this is, I want to make sure I'm reading it right here. Eight D, appropriation of funds and approval of a task order to update the city sewer system management plan and sewer system master plan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council members. The item before you is staff's request for an appropriation of funds and approval of a task order to update the city's sewer system management plan. I'll refer to it as the management plan and the city's sewer master plan, I'll refer to that as the master plan. The city is required by the state's general water quality order to update its management plan every six years. The first SSMP or the management plan was approved by City Council on February twenty-second, two thousand and eleven. And it was updated again in twenty sixteen and twenty twenty-one. The order was revised in twenty twenty-two and the plan is now due under this new order, August second, twenty twenty-five. So in a few months here. The, the goal of the management plan is to reduce and prevent sanitary sewer overflows and to formally state the process for communication and emergency response that may occur to an overflow. This plan is audited in three years to ensure that the methods and procedures that are called out are effective and current. While the management plan focuses on the management of the sanitary sewer system to prevent sanitary sewer overflows, the city's master plan focuses on the adequacy of the system's design to effectively convey sewage to the endpoint, which is the Fillmore Water Recycling Plant on River Street. Our current master plan was prepared in two thousand and six and based upon the twenty twenty, two thousand and five, rather, general plan land use element. Since then, the city has amended the general plan land use element in two thousand and eleven, adopted regulations in light of the state of California's mandate, a mandated allowance of accessory dwelling units, amended the North Fillmore specific plan, approved housing, the housing element twenty nineteen through twenty twenty-eight, approved the KB home project of a hundred and ten units, approved the Williams Homes project of a hundred and thirty-four units, converted the commercial highway zone to residential high with an approval of the Mini Mansions project of fifty units, approved people self-help housing project of fifty units and nearing completion of the Heritage Valley Parks specific plan and surrounding neighborhoods. I'd like to thank the Planning Director for supercharging my staff report with all that information right there. The Planning Department is in the midst, also this, he had to put this in here too. The Planning Department is in the midst of processing housing program requirements for the housing element twenty twenty, two thousand and nineteen through twenty twenty-eight. They yet again will amend the general plan land use element. Hence, the master plan is out of date. An update to this plan will investigate two conditions, today's flow and the anticipated need projected to meet the conditions as built out in twenty twenty-four. This information will be used to forecast the function out, the functional, functional system modeled for build-out conditions. Attached is a proposal from our engineering team that estimates an update to the management plan will cost thirty-nine thousand, two hundred and thirty-three and estimates a hundred and ninety-six thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three to update the master plan. The city's FY twenty-four, twenty-five budget includes a hundred and fifty thousand for the update of these plans. However, the funding source was not addressed in the budget. Therefore, staff has recommended that City Council approve a transfer of a hundred and eighty-eight thousand, one hundred from general impact develop, or development impact fee fund four oh six and twenty thousand, nine hundred from the Sewer Replacement Reserve Fund five oh four to the Sewer Capital Fund and appropriate ninety, I'm sorry, fifty-nine thousand from Fund four oh six Development Impact Fee Sewer to account for sixty-three, sixty-nine, sixteen, zero, zero, fifty-one, five hundred and approve Willdan Engineering's proposal as a task order to update these plans. That concludes my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, thank you, Joe. Presentation. Does council have any questions? Yes, John?
Joe, thank you for that. So in, in producing these plans, I noticed that it looks like every six years, we kind of update them. So that's one method. In other words, every six years, hey, the due date's coming up, so we're going to go pay somebody to update the plan. Have we ever thought about doing like a yearly update where the budget is impacted every year for six years and it's kept up to date as we go? Is that, has that been considered at all?
You know, indirectly it is being, it's a living document really. And it's, it's a formal update that we need to do where council takes an action if there's something that's a significant change in the last time the council has reviewed that plan. So it is, you know, while we keep the document updated with new information, people change, new contacts are made, better processes are figured out. The intent is to have that as a living document, but we kind of need to track those big changes. So when it comes to the six-year marker, that we're coming to council and having you all understand the change from when it was last approved, six years later.
Okay, thanks, Joe.
You're welcome. But the, 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 the cost, I think that's what you're getting at. The cost can be significantly reduced if we are keeping that document updated. So we relied on Veolia to do the last couple of updates. The, with the order changing in twenty twenty-two, that was, you know, some significant, some, some significant changes that we needed to account for. And that's the reason why we're going through this big update right now. It's due to the order, the change in the order.
And by order, just to clarify, you mean it's basically the law?
Correct.
State law has changed and so we have to update the plan to comply with state law?
As the owner of a sewer system, that's our mandate.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. So then I guess a follow-up question or idea is, this is something, like you said, big changes need to be made. Removing it from Veolia, who did it before, now Willdan. But in the future, there could be, like you said, maybe some potential cost savings to stay, stay on top of it on that basis.
We're, we're going to keep it, you know, within the city staff, keeping that, an eye on that document and making the changes as necessary. This, you know, because again, because of the twenty twenty-two order, this is a good time to run some new models that's done through the engineering team. And, you know, that's, that's the need in-house, we don't have that, we have to rely on our engineering team. We have to rely on our engineering team.
Right, okay, all right, thank you. Okay, no other questions or comments, then I will, oh, yes, Carrie.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, I'm a little confused here on that paragraph under fiscal impact. If I'm reading this correctly, is what we're saying is that even though we just approved the budget for this year, because it wasn't, this wasn't addressed in the twenty-four, twenty-five, we now have to go back to our budget we just approved and take out one hundred and eighty-eight thousand one hundred from diff fees, twenty thousand nine hundred from sewer replacement fund, and fifty-nine thousand from the sewer capital. Is that correct? And that's not reflected in the budget that we just prepared or just approved?
I'm going to look at Deborah for that.
So the budget you just approved is for next fiscal year, so it's twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year. This is in the current fiscal year, and it was not included when we approved the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year. So that's why we're asking for the appropriation. It's the current fiscal year, not the one that starts on July first, which is the budget you just approved.
Okay, so it will come out in the twenty-four, twenty-five?
Correct.
Yes. All right, thank you.
Okay, that's, that's a good question. All right. Okay, I will look for a motion on this item.
I move that the council approve a transfer of one hundred and eighty-eight thousand one hundred from diff fee fund 406 and twenty thousand nine hundred from the sewer replacement reserve fund 504 to sewer capital fund, and appropriate fifty-nine thousand from Fund 406 Development Impact Fee Sewer to account number 463-6916-0051-500, and approve Willdan Engineering's proposal as a task order to update the plans. The plan.
Thank you. And we have a second? All right, second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you, thank you, Joe. All right. Our next item of business is item eight E. Is there a public hearings to consider the adoption of resolutions approving the, sorry, the engineer annual levy report for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, and ordering the annual levy and collection of the assessments for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six within the City of Fillmore, Heritage Valley Landscape and Lighting District 2007-1 and Landscape and Lighting District Number Two, respectively.
Thank you, Mayor. Just as a quick procedural note, these are formal public hearings, so after the staff presentation, there'll be opening of the public hearing, closing the public hearing, receiving any comment in between, and then a roll call vote at the end.
Roll call vote, okay, thank you.
And then also add, two of us have to recuse ourselves, so can we just stay here and then just recuse or not, just not vote at the end?
In terms of how it's been done in the past, has been the council members abstaining from the particular district, so the vote's been done by a roll call vote, and then the council member has announced what the conflict is for the specific district. So you could abstain as to the specific district that you're in, still hear the presentation and vote on the remaining districts.
Thank you.
If you have a question at the time, I can help you with language.
Okay, all right, do we have any other question? Okay, Deborah, thank you.
Perfect, consider to get this right there. Okay, good evening, council members. Mayor Viasenor, I'm Deborah Cavallaro, Finance Director. As you see with item AE, we're requesting to adopt the resolutions from its 4067, six-six to 4069 to approve the engineer's annual levy report for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, of course, and then, of course, add this to the annual levy and collection of assessments for this year within the City of Fillmore for the two districts that we have in the title. We have here tonight online Michelle Lassie, who is a project manager, and Miranda Cervantes, who is the fiscal analyst from Willdan Financial, who prepared the engineer report and are available to answer any questions regarding the report. As stated in the staff report, the city's two landscape and lighting assessment districts are landscape and lighting district number two and Heritage Valley Landscape and Lighting District 2007-1. These districts contain landscape improvements in designated medians, parkways, et cetera, and street lighting improvements with designated zones or located residential, commercial, or mixed uses. The annual assessments fund the operations, administration, utilities, maintenance, and improvements. The assessment calculations includes an annual inflationary adjusted formula that the maximum assessment may increase over the previous year by three percent, or the annual percentage increase in the consumer price index, whichever is greater, without being considered a increased assessment. The annual CPI annual percentage difference from January from the current year to prior year increased by three point three-three percent. Therefore, the prior year's maximum assess rates have been adjusted by the three point three-three percent to establish this year's maximum assessment rate. This item meets the City Council goals for infrastructure. This is the end of my presentation, and we are available for questions, and I verify they are online.
Okay, thank you very much, Deborah. Okay, at this point in time, then I am going to open our public hearing to receive any public testimony regarding the City Council's intent to improve the engineers, approve the engineer's report and the levy of assessments within Landscape and Lighting District 2007-1 and Landscape and Lighting District 02. Okay, being that there has been no public comment received, either in person or, I think, written comment, then I believe I can close the public hearing. Okay, and so the public hearing is now closed, and then I will look to council for any, for our action to take on this item. And that would be listed there under several, well, there's five actions actually taken, Michael. Do we, in making this motion, do we need to read them all, or can we include them?
So I think what could be done here, there are four resolutions listed as items one through four in the staff report. So I think the council member making the motion could just say, I move to adopt resolution twenty-five forty sixty-six, twenty-five forty sixty-seven, twenty-five forty sixty-eight, and then be sure to include number five. So at the end of that, it would be and authorize staff to incorporate.
Perfect, okay, thank you. All right, I'll entertain a motion on this item.
I move to adopt resolution twenty-five dash four zero zero six, resolution...
Oh, actually, can you read that one more time, Luis?
Twenty-five dash four zero six six.
Thank you.
Resolution twenty-five dash four zero six seven, resolution twenty-five dash four zero six eight, resolution twenty-five dash four zero six nine, and authorize staff to incorporate the revenue and expenditures contained in the annual budgets for lighting, Landscape and Lighting District O-two and Lighting and Landscape District 2007-01 into the City of Fillmore annual budget.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you, we have a motion, we have a second, and we will take a roll call vote. Thank you.
Councilmember Brogie? Mayor Prota Mendez?
Sorry, just stop that for a sec. I think, Carrie, that you can vote for them, you just have to say that you're abstaining from your particular district.
There's one, it's up to you. If you prefer to abstain from the whole, that's fine. There's also a particular district that you can specifically note that you abstain from...
I'll just abstain from the whole.
Okay.
All right, so, I'm sorry to interrupt that, I wasn't sure if that was... Okay, thank you, so we'll continue with our roll call, so...
Mayor Prota Mendez?
Yes.
Mayor Viasenor?
Yes, but I am abstaining on District 02, tract 5099, Riverwalk.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Garnica?
Okay, thank you, motion passes. All right. And we'll move on now to our last business item, which is item eight F. The public hearing to consider the adoption of resolution number twenty-five dash four zero seven zero, confirm the annual budget and ordering the annual levy and collection of assessments for the Fillmore Storm Drain Maintenance Districts for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. I'm sorry, and also, yes, storm drain. Also, the assessment, I think I got it all, okay. Sorry about that, thank you, Deborah.
And good evening, again, council members. Viasenor, I'm Deborah Cavallaro, Finance Director. And this is a public hearing to consider adoption of resolution twenty-five dash four zero seventy, confirm the annual budget, order the levy and collection assessment for the Storm Drain Maintenance Districts for twenty-five, twenty-six. We have here tonight Michelle Lassie, project manager, and Miranda Cervantes, financial analyst from Willdan Financial, who prepared the engineer report and available to answer questions. As stated in the staff report, we have seven Storm Drain Maintenance Districts. The annual assessment pays for the maintenance operation costs related to storm drain facilities and storm water pollution treatment systems available, utilized, or associated with the properties within each district. The annual expenditures budget for each district ensure the operation and integrity of the storm drains and storm water pollution systems plus related facilities, and represents each district's proportional cost of a larger integrated storm drain and storm water pollution treatment system. These systems are such as retention basins, biofilter areas, and catch basins. The annual assessments include the maintenance and servicing of the Santa Clara River levy adjacent to the district properties. The assessment, as with the other, was calculation includes an annual inflationary adjustment formula that the maximum assessment may have the maximum rate you can assess over the previous year by three percent, or the annual percentage increase in the consumer price index, whichever is greater, without being considered increased assessment. The annual CPI, again, for between January and current year versus prior year was three point three-three percent. Therefore, the prior year maximum assessment rates have been adjusted by three point three-three percent to establish this year's maximum assessment rates. This meets City Council's goal for infrastructure. This is the end of my presentation, and we are available for questions.
Okay, thank you. It's my turn now to open the gavel in, and we are opening the public hearing to receive any public testimony regarding the City Council's intent to improve the annual, approve the annual reports and the levy of assessments. Seeing that no public comment is received here in person, nor any written public comment. Okay, going once, going twice, okay, I will now close the public hearing and take any comments or questions.
So I have a question for the city attorney, so, Michael, thank you for, again, putting up with my, my question here. So can you explain the difference? So this one, obviously, in my mind, has very similar potential conflicts as the previous set, so why, why are there not abstentions required for this one versus the previous one? Oh, there are, okay, all right, that answers the question, thank you.
Those will be announced at the time of the vote, assuming that there's a motion to approve.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Thank you for that.
Okay, do we have any questions for Deborah? Okay, not seeing none, then. I will entertain a motion on this item. Actually, we have two things listed, the adoption of the resolution and then the authorization of staff.
Okay.
I have a motion. I move that we adopt resolution number twenty-five dash four zero seven zero, confirming the annual budget and ordering the annual levy and collection for assessments for the Fillmore Storm Drain Maintenance Assessment Districts Number 01, 01A, 03, 04, 05, 06, and 07 in fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six pursuant to the Benefit Assessment Act of nineteen eighty-two.
And authorize staff.
Oh, yes. And authorize staff to include that in the budget.
Okay, I have a motion, do we have a second?
Second, then motion.
All right, we will now take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Brogie?
Abstain.
Mayor Prota Mendez?
Yes.
Mayor Viasenor?
Yes, but I am abstaining from the assessment at District Number Four, Riverwalk.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Aye.
Councilmember Garnica?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries, and is passed. Okay, thank you all very much. That ends our business items. We now move on to item number nine, our city manager's verbal report.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to call Chief Malagon, he's going to be providing an update on our homeless
Thank you, Erica. Good evening, Mayor, City Council members, community members. As requested by Councilmember Garnica, I'm here to provide just a quick update on some of our homeless things that are going on right now, some stuff that has caught the attention of the public, so I'll be, I'll be brief. So as you guys recall, last year, we did a couple of dumpster drop-offs over off Gasway and A Street for the homeless people down there to clean up their trash, and those were pretty successful. So we did two of those this month, or actually, this past month, on April eighteenth and April twenty-five, or twenty-fifth, we dropped off two dumpsters on each day. They filled up rather quickly, and our homeless liaison unit actually went down there, and they, they commented to me how much cleaner it looked after the dumpsters were there. So they, they do work, and so we'll keep an eye on that and see if maybe we can do something similar in the next couple of months. One of the things that you guys might have seen on the, on the news is burglary at the Von Shopping Center on April twenty-fourth. That was done by, by one of our, it's not a local, but it was a transient out of Thousand Oaks. That transient does have prior contacts in Fillmore, but she is not from here, she's from Thousand Oaks. We had a, on April twenty-fifth, we had an encampment fire under the bridge, which I'm sure you guys saw or heard of. That was to a, one of the structures under that were, I think you described it as pretty elaborate, that was one of them. The cause of fire is unknown, but there's nothing suspicious noted from the, the fire investigators. On April twenty-ninth, we did have a shoplift of high-end, not high-end, but a significant dollar amount from Bonds, which consisted of meat and alcohol. Again, that was the transient from Ventura. He actually got arrested and got put in jail. He, he's one of the, on, back on April twenty-fourth, before he was arrested, HLU actually contacted him and were able to make arrangements to get him to the Mercy, Mercy House in Ventura. Unfortunately, he came back, and that's when he got arrested. But again, he's not one of our local ones here. Let's see here.
Can you say they're not local? They're not local?
Yes.
But they're still staying in the river, or they're just passing through, or...
So, so that's a good question. So we get, we get both, right? For the most part, everybody down here is local. We do get the occasional person that's walking through, and two things happen, either they walk through and they're gone, we never see them again, or they walk through, they eventually get contacted and get arrested, they get put in jail, and then we, we typically won't see them back again. Just because we're kind of isolated, right? It's a long way east to LA County. San Antonio is pretty far east, it's not like you can just kind of walk your way down here and then obviously more, so, yeah, they walk down here, they'll pass through, or they get contacted, arrested, and then we don't see them again, typically is what happened with those. Yeah. Let me see, for homeless liaison unit, so they, they've been pretty active down there since they came, since they, since the full-time team started. They did backpack medicine on March twentieth, and they provided services to twelve unhoused persons. They did services on 410 and provided services to four unhoused persons. Backpack medicine, again, on the twenty-fourth of April, and they provided services to six unhoused persons. If you recall, before HLU was here, backpack medicine was done, you know, maybe once a month, but usually, you know, once every three or four months. So they're, they're picking it up, they're ramping up efforts, and hopefully, we get some success stories out of that. They've also, HLU has also conducted two fire prevention operations. One was on February twenty-sixth, and the other one was just this past Thursday on May eighth. Typically, what they do is they'll go out during darkness, they'll use drones with thermal capabilities to spot reckless fires in the river bottom, and then they address any issues that, that come up and make arrests if appropriate. We haven't had any arrests here, but they did do an operation in Ventura a couple of months back, and that, that resulted in the arrest of two individuals. So they're staying on top of that and conducting those operations to hopefully avoid the fire chief some, some unnecessary work down there. And then the last thing I have here for HLU is they did assist, like I said, two, two local, or two subjects with housing. One of them was a Mercy House individual that unfortunately came back and then got arrested. We haven't seen him since. And then the other one was... And then the other one was a local transient that was taken to the Harbor Shelter. Again, unfortunately, he was only there for the night, and he's right back with us here now, so... Aside from that, like I... You know, we're just continuing to monitor and track our homeless population down there. We're staying on top of them. We know who they are. We're making contact with them. We're figuring out where they're staying. We identified all the different encampments down there so that if something does happen in the city, our people know where to go pretty much immediately. And like has been mentioned earlier by the city manager, the encampment resolution funding, where, you know, Manny and Eric are working on a few things behind the scenes. So once that gets going, we'll utilize some funding to, you know, do cleaning efforts and also some additional enforcement operations or outreach services utilizing the grant funds. That's all I got. If you got questions, sir.
Yes, John.
So thank you for that update, chief. I really appreciate it, and I know that the constituents appreciate the work you guys are doing. So my question has probably not necessarily directed at you. Maybe there's another resource that might be able to answer this. But I know that the homeless problems that we have societally are not simple, you know, black and white. There are several different categories of homeless that people fall into. There are people that are homeless because of economic situation. It's temporary. They don't want to be homeless. They want to get into housing as soon as possible. Let's call that category A. There are people that are on the street because they choose to be there. They don't like the rules of society, so they want to be able to do whatever they want. Let's call that, you know, the category B. And then there... Let's say, for lack of a better term, there may be people that have mental illness. And they're also because they want to be, but they don't really understand necessarily their situation. Is there an attempt to kind of distinguish between those different populations when... I don't... Not necessarily law enforcement, but when the public agencies are dealing with those different populations to try to help them with their individual needs? Is that going on?
Yes. So one of the things backpack medicine does is when they do go down there for outreach services, they... Obviously, our deputies go down there with them, but it's primarily for security purposes, right? They're not down there to do any kind of enforcement whatsoever unless it's absolutely necessary to help save somebody from getting hurt. But they take... Literally, they got doctors down there, nurses. They got mental health professionals. They got substance abuse professionals. And so between everybody down there, they provide the services to that specific individual that they feel are best suited for them. So somebody that's got mental health issues, they're gonna go heavy on that side of it and ensure that they get whatever resources they need on that end to help address their issues. But yeah, I mean, you're absolutely right. There's substance abuse problems. There's mental health issues. I think on a lot of them, if not the majority of them, substance abuse problems, drug problems are huge on just about every one of them. And you're right, I do agree with you. There are different categories, if you will, where some may... You know, some maybe got laid off from work and they're falling through hard times. And then there's the other side, like you mentioned, that are just... They're down there because, for the most part, they want to be down there. They got family in town. Or when they make it to the shelters, unfortunately, they don't like to abide by the rules. They're very, very strict. And rightfully so. They gotta run a tight program there, and Harbor is one of them. So yeah. But they do address... Backpack medicine does help address specific issues for the specific individual.
Okay, and so Erica, so I guess my question would be, maybe... Like I said, maybe chief isn't the appropriate person to address this, but I don't know about the rest of the council, but I would like to see kind of an update as to that population breakdown.
So that's gonna happen once we start implementation of the grant. Manuela and I have been working behind the scenes on putting into place what needs to happen. So we are having another meeting with Spirit of Santa Paula soon. And then a sub-agreement needs to be issued, which will be brought to council for approval. And then at that point, we will go ahead and start providing with more updates. But the grant is to target the population in what we refer to Sunken City.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Questions? Yes, thank you. Yes, Carrie.
Well, I don't have a question, just a comment. We recently had Jim Duran, who is the Executive Director of Tender Life. He's also pastor of a huge church in Ventura. And he's been involved for decades on the homeless situation. And he recently spoke at Rotary. And he raised some really important issues on why the homeless situation is not improving. And that's because getting the home... Those who are in the river bottom or anywhere else into housing isn't the answer. I understand what you're saying, that backpack medicine is coming down there with doctors and social workers and whatnot. But I feel like we spend so much of our time and effort dealing with low-income housing or, you know, some of the nonprofits that are building developments here in Fillmore and other places in the county to house people that are homeless. And that's not the solution. The solution is they need to resolve their issues. You know, a lot of them have, you know, alcoholism, drug addiction, other mental health issues. And according to Mr. Duran, Pastor Duran, that's not going to solve the problem. Because if their illness or whatever terminology you want to use isn't cured, they'll be right back out on the street again. And so it's just a frustrating thing. I know it is for a lot of people who are thinking, seeing what's happening over the last few years, and it's perpetuating. I don't see it getting any better. But I don't know how to focus that direction, you know, shift the thinking from... Away from, oh, let's get a roof over their heads. That's not the answer. And I don't know if anybody has the answer.
Yeah.
The problem is that you can't force somebody... I think the problem is you can't force an individual to accept the help. If you're trying to get him into a drug program, you can't force them to go in there. Same thing if they're mentally ill. You can't force them to go into...
True.
And so, yeah.
Although I think there used to be a day that you could.
Yeah, it's extremely complicated. And I mean, I wish I could solve it. I probably wouldn't be working here if I could solve that problem. But, you know, to Albert's point, one of the things that the hope was with HLU was consistency and adding consistency with their contacts. So having a group of deputies that were consistently contacting these individuals and hopefully that would build a rapport to eventually help them gain that trust and eventually get them to get that help that they actually need. It's a work in progress. Obviously, it's not gonna be super quick. And they've had some success stories. I mean, but it is difficult. It is very difficult.
I might be more... I'd like to hear those success stories. I'd like to hear from individuals who have been through the whole process and didn't get a roof immediately put over their heads, but rather dealt with their issues first and then took the steps then to, you know...
Yeah, I mean, I can tell you that we don't... None come to mind here that are... That have really said, okay, I need help. I'm gonna go get this done. For the most part, it's, you know, a night or two, and then they leave the program because they don't want to deal with the rules. They want to do drugs in there. They want to stay out late and whatnot. But we do have the Kenny Grove story with the family that was that category where, you know, they lost a job. They lost their house, and they're in a nice home now. So, you know, I think you help those that want to get help and hope for the best on the other ones.
Yeah, Carrie, I don't think... With the grant, I don't see... You know, because I was at that same presentation at the Rotary. You know, there was kind of a blanket statement that I don't agree with, which was that, hey, the current philosophy of solving homelessness is to just put a roof over their head. And I don't... At least in my experience, I've not seen that kind of a philosophy spoken about. It's... From what I've seen, it's very much... You need to address each individual's needs. If they need a home, then sure, then let's get them a home. But I don't know if I would agree with that the current... And I don't think that our grant is targeted towards, oh, let's just put them all... Let's just give them a house, and that's gonna solve their problems.
But how long are they allowed to stay then in Santa Paula? Spirit of Santa Paula?
Well, again, I don't think that's addressing what I'm saying, though, Carrie.
Michael, I just want to make sure we're not on any violation because we're having a very lengthy discussion.
Really, it's listed on the agenda, but as a city manager verbal report, so it should really be focused on...
On what we're reporting, yeah, sure. We can bring back the information. I just want to make sure we protect, you know, so...
I agree.
And that we're following the Brown Act. So we can come back with more details in the future and perhaps just put it under presentation, and then we can have a more lengthy discussion.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Bilimmo, you're up for parks updates.
Wanted to give you guys a quick update on a couple of our issues at our parks. Some good news and some unfortunate news. Two Rivers Park is going very well. Lights are up. The sports lights are up. We're waiting on a piece that will complete that project, and I'll be bringing the notice of completion for that portion of the work here quickly in the next couple of meetings, I believe. The... We're under budget on our landscape or irrigation and our turf retrofit or repair. So we... If you recall, the previous authorization was for the soccer and the football field to retrofit that one with overhead irrigation and restore the turf. Because we're under budget, we now can include the softball... I'm sorry, the two baseball fields. Those we couldn't include in the beginning because there was rentals. So youth sports is done at this point, Little League. They're done as of the 8th. So we started talking to Venco before that time period to get to this point where we could give them a go-ahead on that portion of the work, too. So I got a revised schedule for them today, and everything should be perfect as far as lights, turf, and irrigation at Two Rivers in time for AYSO to start their season August 1st. That comes with it, the... We're gonna be closing, obviously, the baseball areas as well as the... So the entire sports... All sports areas are gonna be closed to the public. We're gonna be gating them off starting tomorrow.
Okay.
So fencing them off, rather.
Just to clarify, this is the entire sports area of Two Rivers Park? The long field with the lights as well as the two baseball diamonds?
Correct. We're...
Does that include the walking area, too? The paths around the fields?
No, we made extra effort because there are a lot of people that use that walking path. So yeah, we kept that open, along with the tot lot, the dog park, and the restrooms. Those are all gonna stay open. It's just the play areas. Yes, sir.
So one of the complaints that I got before, when we closed down some of the other, like Shields Park, was that there was no signage that said "why." And so people were like, hey, what? Why is the park closed? It's... The whole park is closed, and we don't know when it's gonna open, and we don't know why. And so one of the requests... And I would explain to them what was going on. That, hey, this is for your benefit. It's gonna, you know, obviously, we need this. But the public wants to know, when we close the facilities, hey, what... When do we expect it to open again? And what is the reason for the closure? So I don't know if that was already... You guys may have already thought of that, but I just wanted to make sure that it was voiced.
You know, we do social media posts about the closures, and we do the website posts. But I think it would be a good idea to do the sign.
We could add a QR code that directs to the website so people can scan the QR code.
Okay. Great idea.
We'll get that down next week.
For more information as to why this park is closed?
Correct, yeah.
Please scan.
So yeah, everything is gonna open up on schedule by the AYSO scene, which was gonna be August 1st.
August 1st.
Bit of unfortunate news, changing over to Rio Vista in downtown. It's unfortunately, some theft is going on with our plants. We had a couple of rose bushes stolen from Rio Vista Park. And unfortunately, some of our new plants were taken from our downtown beautification project. So we're asking the public to keep an eye out. Let us know if they see anything so we could stay on top of that.
Do they just uproot the plant and walk off with it?
Yeah, unfortunately. And it was the... I just... You know, coincidentally, it's the weekend of the flower show, so... Just putting that out there.
I've never heard of that happening. That's crazy.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that is... And it's the vandalism at Shields. They were pulling wires out of the light standards there at Shields. Yeah, so that is not, you know, too much of a problem, but it has happened to us. At Dolores Day, we had one of the light standards jimmying off the bottom plate, pulling out the wires. We suspect that it's to charge cell phones. I think that's what we... The information we came across. But we can't really verify that's happening, but it is being pulled out. They're not pulling out the wire to, like, cash in the copper or anything like that. They're just pulling them out. So that's... We're working with our electrician on something to either put a tack weld on the plates, so it's not easy. They have an anti-theft screw on them, but that is currently not stopping them. So we're gonna look at some other options.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
You're welcome.
Just encourage the community, you know. We're not asking you to go clean the parks with us, you know, but we are putting a lot of effort to try to keep up with the parks and money. So please do your part to help us keep your community clean and good-looking. And if you see something, say something and report it to the proper channels. I also want to take this opportunity to thank Brian McCarthy, our Assistant Director for Planning and Community Development. Although he's not here, he was instrumental for our Rule 28 project, which is the underground of the utilities here on Santa Clara Avenue. His leadership skills made it possible to complete the project. So I just want to acknowledge that and thank Brian publicly for everything that he did and for his project management and just directing all the different parties that had to be involved in making that a success. And then remind the public that this month is National Bicycle Safety Month. So please make sure that you share the road. Make sure that if you are riding your bicycle, to wear your protective equipment, a helmet. And if you're a parent and you have your kids riding your bicycle to school, make sure that you have a conversation with them about respecting the loss, the speed, and making sure that they make the proper stops and to the drivers to be aware also of their surroundings.
Does that include e-bikes?
That includes e-bikes as well. We did post information on our website with the assistance of our fire... Our police department. And lastly, just remind the public, we do have that event on Saturday. We hope to see you there, and that concludes our updates. Thank you so much.
Okay, great. Thank you, Erica. Okay, we do not have any closed session today. Couple minutes without... Couple of meetings without closed session. So that brings us to the adjournment of our meeting. So I will adjourn until our next regularly scheduled city council meeting at 6:30 PM on Tuesday, May 27th, here at City Hall. Thank you. Have a great evening.